December twenty second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow.
Yeah.
Pat Hobus.
Here.
Beth Gilman.
Here.
Roseanne Hickman.
Present.
Lisa Sabodian. Margaret Phillips.
Here.
Jerry Trolle.
Present.
Thank you. Council, you received the December twenty two, or?
Twenty second.
May, meeting minutes from the last, that's a typo there.
Yeah, it's a zero eight, sorry.
Zero eight, okay, we'll correct that. Um, you received the December eighth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Seconded by Ms. Phillips. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same side? Motion carries, thank you. The chair notes certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, public comment. Um, normally you would have to sign up on the piece of paper, but since we don't have that, if any of the guests listeners would like to speak, just let me know right at this time. Okay. Um, we'll move on to executive officers' reports. Um, council tonight, there are three new ordinances and one new resolution. Resolution twenty dash twelve will be assigned to Mrs. Hickman's Environment and Public Works. Um, ordinance thirty dash twenty. Um, Mr. Hatfield will speak about that, I'm sure, at his time, and he has asked, has, has been done in the past. If the council would waive the three required readings and pass on its first reading, he can talk during his time. Ordinance thirty one dash twenty, um, will be assigned to Mrs. Gilman's Arts and Culture. Ordinance thirty two dash twenty will be assigned to Ms. Phillips, Safety and Services. Um, again, as I announced at the beginning, I'd like to welcome the new Ward Two Councilman, Lisa's Sabodian. And I'll let her speak at the end during council speak, and she can tell a little bit about herself. Um, Ms. Osterheimer, if you will email everyone the current rules of council, because we will have to adopt new rules of council in January, so if anyone has any additions, deletions, corrections, changes they would like, please email me with your suggestions, and it can be discussed at the next meeting and hopefully adopted by the last meeting of January. Um, at this point, we will, like I said, we'll still keep the council meetings by Zoom with the pandemic at six o'clock. It could be looked at later, if we would wanted to move council meetings to six o'clock specifically, do committee meetings after, or anything like that, we can discuss that at a later time. Um, committee chairs, if you would like to change up your committees, let me know, or keep it the same. Um, that again is up to you, we'll get, um, Ms. Sabodian on um, one committee to start with, we'll fit, we can figure that out. So with that being said, that's all I have, and just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President, can you, okay, I'm, I'm unmuted. I, I too would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and as well, welcome Lisa Sabodian to, uh, City Council as Ward Two Representative. I learned of her appointment, uh, Sunday, early Sunday morning, in a text message from the Ottawa County Republican Party. Uh, we had our first phone conversation Monday afternoon. Uh, we met in person on a Zoom Monday evening, and then, uh, earlier today, she came in here for a brief, uh, orientation, uh, with Mrs. Sardi, Mrs. Osterheimer, and Mr. Colston, took the oath of office, uh, received other information about, uh, council's actions and activities, uh, that are underway. And again, as Mrs. Sardi alluded to, we hope we'll learn a little bit more about her later this evening. I had an opportunity to participate in Rees Across America, uh, this past Saturday at the cemeteries here in town. My parents and I, uh, stood at the side of my grandparents' grave. My grandfather, Howard Ossling, was a member of the US Army during World War Two, uh, served in Europe, and that, that was a great honor to participate in, in that event. Switching gears dramatically here, um, at home, I have a, a fifteen inch ceramic Christmas tree, but I know many watching here have, have live Christmas trees, and that's a family tradition, and then the big question is, what do you do with it after the holiday season? Well, there's a variety of options, but I have two of them to tell you about. Uh, Republic Services will be collecting Christmas trees during the normal pickup time, the first two weeks of January. So have them out at the curb next to your, your trash cans, and Republic will pick them up. An alternative option, African Safari Wildlife Park, they collect Christmas trees as well to use for shelter and, and other purposes out at the safari park. They ask that it not have any ornaments, any lights, any of the hooks, no spray snow or anything like that. For additional information, or to find out how to donate your Christmas tree, you can contact the safari park at four one nine seven three two thirty six oh six, extension four, again, four one nine seven three two thirty six oh six, extension four. The Gift of Lights, which is taking place a few doors down from where I'm currently seated, over in Adam Street Park, that's going to continue. Uh, and voting will continue until the thirty first of December. You can vote at many locations in the downtown area, shops, restaurants, as well as the Chamber of Commerce Office. Council, I'm, I'm very pleased to announce that the construction phase of the Jefferson, Jefferson Street project is complete. All of the punch list items were completed earlier this month. Uh, Mr. Hatfield can confirm this, that there may be some paperwork and some exchange of, of dollars still to go in the background, but the construction side is one hundred percent complete. FEMA has come out with their revised preliminary flood insurance study, as well as their revised preliminary site map for Ottawa County. Um, now, as many of you know, I can speak a little bit of Mandarin Chinese and read even less, but this document is foreign to me. It's, it's, it's crazy, but it is available to review for anyone, both at the City Hall, contact Mr. Colston to make arrangements to review these documents, or you can contact Mark Mesa at the County Courthouse and Regional Planning. That's just simply for review. If you have any questions or comments about these new maps, you'd need to contact FEMA directly, and I have a name, phone number, and email address to give out. Lisa Baden, I believe I'm, for, probably saying a Baelin, B A I L E N, Lisa Baelin. Area code five oh two, two one two, fifty seventy two. Again, Lisa's phone number, five oh two, two one two, fifty seventy two, and her email address is L I S A dot B A I L E N at S T A N T E C dot com. One more time, L I S A dot B A I L E N at S T A N T E C dot com. Council, you have before you tonight several pieces of legislation that will dramatically and longlastingly have a positive impact on the livelihood and well-being of our community. First, the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council has a decades-long engagement with our community. They have worked extremely hard to provide us with form, movement, and color. Through their collective efforts, the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council has provided joy, enriched souls, and yes, even raised a few eyebrows over the years. Very soon, the city of Port Clinton, along with the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council, will take the next in a long line of symbiotic evolutionary steps with the planned repurposing of three seventeen West Perry Street, the old city garage. Any endeavor of this magnitude requires three components, time, space, and energy. While I'm very excited to announce that the time has arrived, the space is available, and ladies and gentlemen, the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council is overflowing with energy. Ordinance thirty one twenty, which can be heard for three readings, will reinforce our community's longstanding acknowledgement of the importance of art and our collective lives. The Art Garage, yes, the new name for three seventeen West Perry, has the real potential to be one-of-a-kind force for substantial economic development and artistic expression for generations. Thanks to the vision of the officers and leaders in the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council for taking on the challenges associated with bringing art in all its forms to the Port Clinton region. Secondly, some two hundreds, correction, some two, six hundred and twenty-one days ago, April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, to be specific, then Safety Service Owen Martin, myself, and members of Pogomeyer Design Group, met at City Hall to begin discussions on a comprehensive infrastructure upgrade for our city. Frankly, the news I was given that day wasn't good. The needs are huge, and the price tag is even larger. Now, we all recognize the surface needs in our community each time we move from point A to point B. However, that's only part of the problem. Investing in ourselves is difficult and not cheap. Investing in something unseen, like water and sewer lines, is needed, but certainly not glamorous. A preliminary plan was created, key department supervisors were consulted, and revisions were made to that plan. The plan was presented to individual council members, as well as all city department supervisors, and again, additional revisions were made. The, the plan was first unveiled to the public right here in this building, in the listening room, in late spring of twenty nineteen. Additional public meetings on the topic were held at the Port Clinton High School Performing Arts Center, the Ottawa County Family Advocacy Center, and in council chambers. Similar presentations were given at Kiwanis, Lions Rotary Club meetings, the Port Clinton Ministers Association, and other community groups and organizations. And as everyone on council knows, people are always talking to you. Multiple informal discussions were held at the A La Carte Cafe, Kroger's, City Park, Friendship Gas Station, Slater's, Aboarded Jet Express, here in this office, and countless other areas around town where people could grab my ears for discussion on the topic for a few moments. All the while, City Council was kept up to date on the progress of the plan of action, and on several occasions provided advice and authorization on the scope and direction of the project. Six hundred and twenty-one days ago, we all started a long journey together. Now, understand, we aren't near the end of that journey, but we are further along today than we've ever been as a community to improving the quality of life for everyone. Council, your actions tonight should be applauded by everyone with a connection to Port Clinton. Tonight, your vote will change the course of this community for the better for decades to come. I can't wait to sign this legislation into law. Sincerely, thank you, thank you, thank you. Madam President, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, Mr. Hatfield.
Thank you, Madam President. Can we please move me before the mayor, it's always hard to follow. Just real briefly, there are two also important pieces of legislation before you tonight, council. Um, unfortunately, they're not as pretty as what the mayor talked about, but I will talk to him briefly. Uh, up for the third reading is ordinance twenty seven twenty. This is the appropriations ordinance for the first quarter of the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. So, um, obviously, it's not the final appropriations, there's still some work to be done, but this will at least allow the city to continue operating on a financial level for the first quarter of the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. In addition to that, for its first reading, I believe it's thirty dash twenty. Uh, this is more or less, I don't want to call it a formality, but for lack of a better term, uh, it's just to make sure that the budget line items within the appropriations ordinance match what was actually spent. This year's a bit different than years in the past, because if you'll notice, there's approximately three point six million dollars added on to the appropriations for the twenty twenty fiscal year. Uh, vast majority of that is due to the, uh, Jefferson Street project, so incorporating the grants and loan documents or loan funding that we received for that project. Uh, in addition, the cares money to make sure that that's fully appropriated. Um, there's obviously some water and sewer engineering costs, uh, that we took on loans for, and then the Jet Express project. So those, in totality, equal the vast majority of the three point six million dollars additional appropriations. Um, open for any questions that anybody may have, but if not, I would ask that council respectfully pass on its first reading, which I always hate to do, but this is kind of the end of the year tidy up ordinance. And that's it, Madam President.
Yeah. Um, Mrs. Hanson's treasurer's report is dock tax is thirty one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Bed tax is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents. Law Director, Ms. Shanker, do you have anything this evening?
Thank you, Madam President, um, I do not have anything this evening, I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Colston.
I'm gonna echo what Cole said, put us in front of the mayor next time, please. No, I just, I wanted to thank everybody for, uh, that helped out with the Rees Across America, it was a great event. We didn't think we were gonna be able to have it, and yet it turned out very nice, it looked beautiful out there with a little bit of snow on the ground, so very happy with the city crews and everybody who participated and helped lay the rees. And I just want to wish everybody a very happy, uh, holiday season, and please stay safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And we will move on to committees' reports. Mr. Bealow Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee held three public hearings on the proposed monthly infrastructure fee in ordinance twenty eight twenty. And that monthly fee was total twelve dollars fifty cents per month for a typical household with both water and sewer service to fund solely the planned Portland infrastructure improvement project, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water line, no relying roadway improvement portions. Those public hearings were held December second, December fourteenth, and December seventeenth, and the committee had hoped for significant public input at that time. We had only one single member, uh, of the public respond, that was Mr. Notter, who participated at our, uh, previous meeting on December seventeenth. The committee then met December twentieth to take action on the ordinance, and the committee accepted the ordinance by a vote of three zero. Going back to when the ordinance was first written, I was happy to help improve the ordinance so that fewer residents would be presented with what may end up being a significant financial hardship once enacted. We're still facing the pandemic, unfortunately, so section four authorizes the help to others or H two O program, a financial assistance model for senior citizens. Section three of the ordinance states that the infrastructure fee fund shall be dedicated solely to the portion of the infrastructure improvement project presented in Exhibit A, the schematic plan outlining those priority areas in need of repair, so this will certainly not provide a blank check to City Hall. So I'm glad these two items made the ordinance that we have before us tonight, uh, when it was originally drafted, so thanks to all involved, and thanks to Mrs. Shanker for including those. The Finance Committee will work to make sure that the, that the construction schedule promised by the mayor and City Hall is met, that is construction to be completed within twelve to eighteen months of groundbreaking in early twenty twenty-two. Lastly, on affordability, the Finance Committee will continue to solicit feedback from city residents into January and beyond. Council certainly does not stop listening to public comment once an ordinance is passed and enacted. So I've asked Mr. Colston that the water office provide a running record of resident inquiries and any complaints regarding the monthly infrastructure fee, so the council can continue to carefully monitor the rollout of this big infrastructure program, and that we can propose adjustments to the program as may be needed in the future. We all know the infrastructure plan calls for about an eighteen percent increase to those monthly bills that residents will see coming from City Hall every month. So I take that very, very seriously, and I believe we all should. Thank you, Madam President, and I'll speak to the other ordinances of the council, that the committee worked on, uh, as they come up in the agenda.
Thank you, um, do you want to move on to economic and community development, Mr. Bealow?
Sure, nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. Gilman, Arts and Culture.
Nothing at this time, Madam President, but we will have a forthcoming meeting with the assignment of this, this new ordinance, so I'll let you know when that's going to be scheduled and talk to Mrs. Osterheimer on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Safety Services, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President, um, we're going to, uh, look at ordinance thirty two twenty and trying to figure that out. We probably will meet as a group, and do not know yet if it will be finished by the first meeting in January, maybe the one after that, we'll see.
Thank you. Um, Environment and Public Works, Mrs. Hickman.
Um, I'll, I will be scheduling a meeting the first couple of weeks of January, so I will be emailing um, Mrs. Osterheimer and the committee members, letting them know about that meeting. That is it, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to correspondence, council, you received a copy of the correspondence. Um, do I have a motion to approve correspondence as presented?
Madam President, I move to accept your correspondence.
Okay, Ms. Phillips, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bealow. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same side? Motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. Um, we have third readings. Would the clerk please read by title and summary, ordinance, title and summary only, ordinance twenty seven dash twenty.
Ordinance twenty seven dash twenty, an ordinance appropriating certain funds for the operation of the city of Port Clinton, Ohio.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance twenty seven dash twenty?
Madam President.
Mr. Bealow.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty seven twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley, any discussion? Flashing, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
And thank you, motion carries by a vote of seven zero. Would the clerk please read ordinance twenty eight dash twenty by title and summary only?
Ordinance twenty eight dash twenty, an ordinance establishing a monthly infrastructure fee to fund the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water line, and associated pavement resurfacing improvements, portion of the city, portion of the Port, excuse me, portion of the Port Clinton Infrastructure Improvement Project, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance twenty eight dash twenty?
Madam President.
Mr. Bealow.
Move to retain the emergency clause in ordinance twenty eight twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Trolley, have a motion by Mr. Bealow to retain the emergency clause, seconded by Mr. Trolley, as to ordinance twenty eight dash twenty. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll, to retain the emergency clause?
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance twenty eight dash twenty by a vote of seven zero. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance twenty eight dash twenty?
Madam President.
Mr. Bealow.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty eight twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty eight dash twenty by Mr. Bealow, seconded by Mr. Trolley, would the clerk please call the roll?
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, ordinance twenty eight dash twenty is hereby adopted with a vote seven zero. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance twenty nine dash twenty?
Ordinance twenty nine dash twenty, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to negotiate and enter into an agreement with a design engineering service company for the final design services of the Port Clinton Infrastructure Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance twenty nine dash twenty?
I was in ordinance twenty nine twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to retain the emergency clause by Mr. Bealow, seconded by Ms. Phillips, as to ordinance twenty nine dash twenty, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Thank you, the emergency clause is retained with a vote seven zero. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance twenty nine dash twenty?
Madam President.
Mr. Bealow.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty nine twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Trolley, thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Bealow.
Finance Committee also took this up at our meeting yesterday and recommended three zero to accept the ordinance.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty nine dash twenty, my Mr. Bealow, seconded by Mr. Trolley, would the clerk please call the roll?
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance twenty nine dash twenty is adopted with a vote seven zero. We have no second readings of ordinances and resolutions, we'll move on to first readings of ordinance, ordinances and resolutions. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance thirty dash twenty?
Ordinance thirty dash twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number one dash twenty of the city of Portland and adjusting accounts within the city of Portland.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance thirty dash twenty?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Bealow.
Move to waive the three required ratings of ordinance thirty twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to waive the three required readings as to ordinance thirty dash twenty by Mr. Bealow, seconded by Mr. Trolley, would the clerk please call the roll?
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
And Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries to waive the three required readings as to ordinance thirty dash twenty by a vote of seven zero. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance thirty dash twenty?
Madam President.
Mr. Bealow.
Move to adopt ordinance thirty twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Phillips, thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Bealow.
Finance Committee took this up at our meeting yesterday and recommend, uh, adoption three zero.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, with the, we have a motion to adopt ordinance thirty dash twenty by Mr. Bealow, seconded by Ms. Phillips, would the clerk please call the roll?
Pat Hobus.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, ordinance thirty dash twenty is adopted with a Ordinance 30-20 is adopted with a vote seven zero. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 31-20?
Ordinance 31-20, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into an lease agreement with the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council to lease the land and property located at 317 West Perry Street, Port Clinton, Ohio, to serve as the primary location for a community-based arts and cultural center, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 31-20? Seeing none, ordinance 31-20 will be moved to its second reading on July, next regular scheduled council meeting, on January 20th, January 12th, 2021. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 32-20?
Ordinance 32-20, an ordinance authorizing the Chief of Police to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance for the operation of the Port Clinton Harbor Patrol and appropriating funds.
Do, does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 32-20? Seeing none, the ordinance will be moved to its second reading on January 12th, 2021. Would the clerk read, please read by title and summary, only Resolution 20-12?
Resolution 20-12, a resolution authorizing the Director of Safety and Service to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, to request partial funding for the construction of a multi-use trail on Lake Shore Drive, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to Resolution 20-12? Seeing none, Resolution 20-12 will be moved to its second reading on January 12th, 2021. We'll move on to business from the floor, and we will start with Ms. Limbodi Sabodian. She can just tell a little bit about herself.
I meant when I talk a little louder.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm originally from Port Clinton, born and raised here. I graduated from Port Clinton Senior High School, and then I went down to Hocking Technical College and got a two-year degree there in recreation and wildlife, and then I took on a career as the National Park Service Park Ranger for 32 years, and most recently retired from the Great Smoky Mountains National Park. I served as a commissioned law enforcement officer, also an emergency medical technician intermediate, a wildland firefighter, and a host of other odds and ends jobs, but primarily my latest was working with the U.S. District Court in Knoxville, Tennessee, as a representative of the park and prosecution of its cases there. So I retired from the park service in December of 2018. I came back up home here and worked over in Sandusky as a bus driver with the Transit Authority over there for a year, and then fully retired last year about this time. And I have been with my mom. She's getting older, and asked me if I would mind moving home and being with her for a while, so that's where I am. I'm happy to be back home. I served with the federal government, and now I'm looking forward to serving locally here with you all.
Thank you, and we have a good group, so.
I think so, so far so good. If anybody has any questions to me, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have one question for the newly staff. What was maybe one or two things that made you want to seek that position to which you were appointed?
Again, I pretty much have spent my entire adult life serving, serving the public in various positions, and even after my park service experience, I came home and still felt the need to be out amongst the public. This, to me, is just an extension, a continuation of serving the public, serving my hometown citizens, and wanting to be involved. And, you know, to me, being out here and having a chance to see what's going on and representing folks from my ward, as well as across the city, it's a perfect opportunity. I just, that's, that's my, my deal, is to do what's right for the city and hopefully get other people encouraged to be involved a little bit more.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Bealow?
No, thanks.
Okay. Mrs. Hickman?
Um, I would just like to welcome Lisa. I look forward to working with you on city council. Thank all of our guests who are here watching. Smiling faces, and I would just like to wish everybody a safe, happy, and healthy holiday, and I look forward to seeing all of you in 2021 on to better things, right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President, and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all of you, and please stay safe and wear your masks and avoid being near people. We don't want to go to any more trouble than what we have. Welcome to Lisa. You do look familiar, so, she's nodding, yes.
Do you have her?
See you with us, though, seriously.
English? Senior English?
What's that?
Oh, I just asked her if she had you as a teacher.
What'd she say?
I, she said.
I believe, yes.
Ah, yeah, it was your junior year.
Hello.
Third row.
Did she sit in the wrong third row? Uh-oh, uh-oh.
We get a back check, please.
Mr. Snyder, remember, you were in the second row. Just remember that. But no, it is, it's nice to have you. It's always good to have people come back and see what's really going on around here, because when you move away and you don't return, you don't have a clue. Glad to have you back, though, seriously.
Thank you very much. Glad to be back.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Mrs. Hovis?
Um, I want to welcome Lisa. It's nice to see you, and wishing everybody a happy and safe Christmas, and see you next year.
Thank you.
And that's it, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilman?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a safe holiday. There's quite a few events going on across this week. Tomorrow, the bistro has their big dinner. On Thanksgiving, they served over 500 meals, and they're doing a Christmas drive-through dinner. And then the FOP is hosting a free pancake breakfast on the 26th, so I would just encourage people to go out and have pancakes after, you know, busy Christmas week. Get out of the house a little bit socially distanced, stay safe, and just wish everybody a safe holiday season. That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trolley?
I just want to reiterate, welcome Lisa to city council. It's interesting. And Merry, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to my fellow councilmen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing else? Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move this August body adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley.